Okay, this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Wilmete zoning board of appeals. Mr. Roberts, will you please call the roll?
Here.
Mr. Glattard.
Here.
Mr. Pelletan.
Here.
Mr. Sermon.
Here.
Ms. Urban.
Here.
Chairman Schneider.
Here.
This meeting is being conducted remotely via Microsoft Teams. For those watching this video in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under the stay-at-home order issued by Governor Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all in-person governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the Open Meetings Act now permits electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the zoning board of appeals. And this evening, we are conducting our business in compliance. It's the state law. As usual, the meeting is being broadcast live on our local cable access channel six. It is also being broadcast on internet, on the internet, on YouTube Live. And the URL for that is www.youtube.com/user/villageofwilmet/live. To participate in the meeting, you can join through Microsoft Teams. Visit the village's website at www.wilmet.com and find the calendar event for the zoning board meeting. There's a link for you to join the meeting. You will also find the meeting agenda and case reports under the calendar. Alternatively, you can view the meeting on channel six or on YouTube and call into the meeting, allowing you to listen and speak using your telephone. The phone number is 872-239-8225. Tonight's meeting code is 799-191-818. You may also submit your comments through YouTube Live and emails to comdev@wilmet.com. A member of the village staff will read your comment to the zoning board. All comments to the zoning board of appeals will be recorded in the meeting minutes as we typically do. For our meeting guests joining by teams, when you are not speaking, please keep your device muted to minimize disruption of the proceedings and your videos turned off so that the board members can be seen. For those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on the applications for variance from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based upon the evidence we hear this evening, we will make a recommendation to the village board of trustees as to whether the applications that come before us this evening should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the applications meet the standards of review set forth in section 5.4. F of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based on whether the standards of review set forth in sections 5.3. E of our village ordinance are met. The village board of trustees will consider the recommendations we are making this evening at their next regularly scheduled meeting, which is on April 13th. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The village board has final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether we grant or deny them. The village board is not legally bound by our recommendation. There is one small exception to this rule. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application in order for the village board of trustees to approve that application, a super majority of five village board members must vote to approve it rather than a simple majority of four. There's one other requirement that you should be aware of. This board does not operate by a majority vote. We operate instead by a tyranny of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present on the given evening, in order to get a positive recommendation from this board, an application must receive four affirmative votes. Now, tonight, we have six instead of seven members. One member is absent, so you will require four of the six members to vote affirmatively to your application. Since not all of our board members are present, we give the applicants who are scheduled to come before us tonight the option of requesting a continuance to the next available date on our schedule. The next available date for any applicant who would like to request a continuance this evening is April 7th. There's no penalty for asking for a continuance. No such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation for making any substantive arguments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there's no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the evening to which your case is continued. The cases which are here this evening will be heard in the order set forth on the published agenda. When your case is called, please state your name and address and tell us exactly why your applicant application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from the village staff a report containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it is not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has had a chance to speak, we will open the floor to others who wish to speak on the application. I will recognize each attendee to ask if you have a comment, so please wait to be called. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, although we will ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. Any comments received through the YouTube chat, team chat, or email will be read into the record at this time. After we have heard all oral presentations, our closed evidence, and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on an application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceedings will be the members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding, and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are here planning to testify tonight, I would ask you to raise your right hand this time and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth to the testimony that you are about to give? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Mr. Roberts, will you please call the first case of the evening and the only case of the evening?
Our only case is 2021 Z5, 522 Greenleaf Avenue. This is a request for a 7.22-foot side yard air conditioner setback variation to permit the installation of an air conditioner condenser.
Thank you. I think at this point, am I supposed to share my slides if I want to show some pictures?
You have the floor.
All right, if you give me a moment to make sure that I get this right. If it's working, you're seeing the slide right now.
It's working.
Great, thank you. So my name is Nathaniel Stern, and I'm applying with my wife Katrina Knyazova, who's taking care of the kids at this moment, so I will be the only one here. And our request is for a variation so we can install a side yard air conditioner. Just as you said, to be very brief, I will quickly go through what we're doing. We've lived at the property for two and a half years. It's a one and a half-story house, which means that we don't really have an attic. For example, we don't have a full second story. And we've experienced a very hot and humid second floor in this house. And one of the bedrooms also gets very cold in the winter. And we believe that our duct work is insufficient for the second floor due to being an old house. And we also know from prior discussions that the prior owners, really, since their kids left, they basically lived on the first floor in a master bedroom on the first floor, which we've turned into a guest room. And they use local air conditioning there, such as a window AC and local heaters on the first floor. But we, of course, we want our second floor to be comfortable. We have two small children, and we really want to be making full use of our second story. The proposed solution for our needs due to the layout of our house by our HVAC contractor was a mini-split that would target each of the three bedrooms in the upper floors. And as you can see in the right of the slide, a quick floor plan of our upper story, and the red is highlighting where we have a little ceiling cavity that we were hoping to use to run the lines connecting these mini-split units in each bedroom. And then we were hoping to come out of the exterior wall to go to the external unit. So that's the plan proposed by the HVAC contractor. And this is the unit in question. It's an outdoor condenser that will run multiple indoor units. And as you can see from the picture, it is quite thin, but it is tall, 52 inches, and stands on a stand. And it's a Mitsubishi model, and my understanding is that it's a very quiet unit for cooling less than 50 dB of noise, sound level, which is my understanding to be quite quiet on the scale of HVAC equipment, where the typical outdoor condensers, our existing one, I think, is 76 dB for our main central air unit. And this information was in the application, so I will just very quickly mention that that is the approximate location that we are proposing on the left outside of our house. And that would be below the west wall of the house where the lines would exit from the second floor ceiling cavity. I don't know the proper construction term for that, if it's an attic or not, but it's only a triangular region above the bedrooms. And it doesn't extend across the entire house. Bedroom four and that second level is a vaulted ceiling, so there is no cavity up there. Okay, so this is just summarizing what our letter in the application stated is that we were not able to identify a suitable location compliant with the zoning limits for where this condenser could go, the proposed condenser by our HVAC contractor, summarizing that we have the 10-foot restrictions from the lot line on the sides. We also have an existing AC condenser with its own airflow requirements on the left side. And then we have this deck and windows in the middle of zone and stairway that does not seem like an appropriate location for a large piece of equipment that would be blocking the deck and would also be a long distance from where those lines have to exit the house. I personally, I don't know if this is a matter of standard review, but I personally have safety concerns of a fan right outside a deck in the first place because of child safety issues. I mean, someone could stick their hand out. So that's my own personal opinion. I don't know if that's a standard of review for this proceeding. So we were not able to identify a suitable location with airflow, media manufacturer airflow requirements on the back of the house that would be accessible without tearing up the deck, for example, which I think is an uneconomical proposition for this project, proposed project. So the location that we identified would be on the side yard of the house, which is currently a side yard shared between two properties. And it'd be against a wall of the house. There's a picture in the upper right taken a few weeks ago, as you can see with the snow. It's a blank wall of our house. And currently, it would be a little bit further from the picture from the firewood storage, which is what is in the middle of that picture. And then the bottom picture is a view of what that location would look on to, is a small shed and blank wall of our neighbor. This location, in our opinion, and that of our contractor, solves our insulation requirements. It has good airflow, and it meets all the manufacturer requirements. And it doesn't have any of the problems of the other locations. But of course, it's not compliant with the zoning rules. And so that's what started this proceeding. So it's both a good location for the unit and one that solves the problems that we could not, the zoning problems. So it actually solves both. Or sorry, it solves the manufacturing problems if we get the approved variation. We, of course, spoke with our neighbors in person and by email. And in particular, the neighbor across here has expressed support of the proposed location. And he is an electrician himself and has spoken to his HVAC friends. So I think his opinion is at least well-informed. Especially, his one concern is noise levels, which he believes, and his HVAC friends have also confirmed, and also the statistics for the specifications for the unit, being 50 dB is a quiet outdoor unit. So the standards of review and why we believe our case merits approval is that because of the design and layout of the property, of the house on the property, there is no location that would be suitable for a tall condenser for the mini-split, second-floor mini-split system because of the deck location, the windows of the house, and the stair access. The sloped roof of our 1.5-story house does also mean that the line set would be exiting on the west side. So any other location, even if it were compliant, would involve additional cost for running lines basically to the other side of the house. I don't know how much cost is bearing here, but it certainly is. It would be budgetary, it would be a large increase in cost. And in the physical condition of our lot, because our house is on a 50-foot wide lot and it's a 40-foot wide house, there is no compliant side yard option. And it's all taken up by the house itself. And it also doesn't even allow, the five-foot spacing doesn't allow administrative review either, administrative zoning review. It requires a full variation of application. This layout of the house, the house is old. It's over 100 years old, and the inadequate second-floor duct work is what's requiring us to solve this problem of not a comfortable second floor, especially in the summer, but also partially in the winter for one of the bedrooms. And as I mentioned in my picture, that the addition in the back and the deck that were made by the prior owners really does not leave a suitable additional condenser location. I mean, I might be clear, we do have an AC condenser that is taking up the good spot for something like this, you know, the spot that is compliant. So this particular layout with no side yard is not generally shared. Most of the houses in our area are, at least from my visual inspection, are longer and thinner. We have this square shape, leaving no side yard. And I guess I just said this, but our compliant location has an AC condenser. So that, and putting another large condenser unit, even if it's quiet, it does have airflow requirements. So that good location is not usable right now due to the existing system. And as I already mentioned, where we have to install the internal units and the access to outside would also increase cost for any other, from that, do that floor plan restriction of the upstairs would increase any sort of cost of running lines somewhere else. So in our opinion, these hardships would prevent the reasonable use of the property. We do need the second floor's HVAC system to have the most comfortable appropriate living environment. The floor plan is preventing us from solving this problem without unreasonable cost. And alternative locations, I didn't mention this before, but you could imagine roof mounting a system and that might be compliant with zoning, but it also would be exceptionally much more expensive than structural work and engineering to ensure you can put a 300-pound or 250-pound condenser on the roof. Then service requirements of something like that and maintenance of something on the roof, it would be a much larger increase in cost, construction cost, and the safety requirements to maintain, to keep that accessible. The proposed variation will not impair supply of air and light or injure nearby properties or increase danger. This is side yard, a share between two houses. It's not very visible. There's extensions of our building that already would block much of the view of this unit, and there's existing fence. It faces a windowless wall, the neighboring house. It's also a very low-noise HVAC system compared to a typical forced air conditioning system. The mini-split usually is a much quieter solution. And our neighbor has reviewed these with him, and he's expressed support. And it will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood for similar reasons, that it's hidden from most view, including existing architectural structures. And it will extend from our wall less than the existing structure. So it won't change the essential view of the property and the character of the neighborhood. So with that, I'd like to thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions about our proposed solution.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. The members of the board may have some questions for you.
Should I stop sharing or keep it? Do you want to see anything else?
I think you can remove the visual. Thank you.
I have a question. That unit is going to require a condenser line going down from the second floor to the ground. Have you considered how you're going to make that look acceptable?
Yeah, that's a good question. The HVAC contractor said that there's these, I don't know what the name of them are, but I think they're a white trim PC. You go down alongside the existing extension of the house or along one of the windows, and you just have a white. It's like, it'll look, I think, similar to a gutter, for example. You encase the line set in a cover. Again, I don't know the proper name for that, but it is something that we did talk about.
This is Ryrie Pelletan. I have a couple of questions. You indicated that your neighbor to the west is supportive of this, but we don't have any evidence of that aside from your word. Do we have an email or anything like that?
Yes.
There's one from the east, but not from the west in the packet.
I believe one was submitted earlier this week.
Right, Ryrie, I think Lisa sent us an email.
Separately?
Yes.
Okay, well, I didn't print that out and stick it in my thing, so that's my error. Fantastic. The closest spot that's not on the side yard would be next to the deck, as you had indicated, adjacent to the chimney. And that seems perfectly adequate because it doesn't block the windows. I know that you indicated some concern about fingers getting in there, but the fans are actually not adjacent to the deck. They'd be pointing out into the yard. And you could easily put a fence around that section to keep anybody from accessing it. So my question is, the cost of this is probably around $6,000 or $7,000 to have the unit installed and the three units inside the building. How much more, unless you want to provide us the cost, that's the estimate that I looked up for it?
I guess, this is Bob Serman. I'd like to interject one thing. The zoning board typically does not base decisions on costs.
Right.
We've never really done that, so.
Absolutely. Mr. Stern, though, said that it would be unreasonable to increase the length of the line or to place it anyplace else. So I was trying to suss some of that out.
Yeah, I do have another comment. So what was noted on that slide is that if we're against the chimney, it actually would stick back out into the width of the unit if you want to maintain enough airflow on the side of the unit, would then stick out into the zoning variation location as well. So up against the wall, there is actually not actually a great solution for that, to maintain the airflow and then be put back into the zoning variation, if that answers your question. In terms of cost, I don't have a firm estimate. It would be, I know it will be more to run lines around a different location. Certainly, that could be done. It would be a more costly project.
It would require a variance and some additional costs, certainly. But it would also be further away, less proximate to your neighbor, who may not be the person living in that house for, you know, beyond next year. It's difficult to say. The split system, I have to say, is a great solution for your particular problem. I can't believe that the house was permitted to be built so close to the property line. And then with those two additional bump outs where it's maybe two and a half feet from the property line? I mean, it's amazing. But my feeling is that if the property owner to the west is in support of it, then it's about as good a spot as you're going to get. And so while it seems odd and awkward and far from ideal, I would say that that's probably about as good as we're going to be able to find.
Mr. Stern, could you give us examples of what 50 dB sounds like?
So I could try. It's something like a library or something like that.
Let me interject because I was just looking this up for kitchen exhaust fans. It's less than a kitchen exhaust fan. As an example.
A large electrical transformer at 100 feet is one of the specifications.
Everybody knows what that sounds like.
Yeah, a quiet suburb is one of those.
This is Brad Falco. This is a question which is really to those members of the board who have more tenure than I do. What is the real purpose of the setback requirements? Is it sound? Is it something else? I mean, what is it that, the difference from the side yard to the backyard in terms of how much bother it would be to the neighbor doesn't seem to be that great? But is there another issue that I'm missing besides sound?
Lisa may address it. I believe it is noise level at the property line.
I believe it's always been sound issues. We have looked at in the past, if they put it in the backyard, does it become a distraction for the neighbor there as well? It's kind of a trade-off because if you're on your deck, maybe you're inside, but maybe your neighbor is outside, so they're experiencing it. Instead of through their house, through a wall, they're experiencing sitting on their deck with it there. So it's a tough trade-off.
Yeah, and this seems to be a pretty good example of that side yard does not look like it's being used other than there might be a dog run or something. But if you go towards the backyard, you're now potentially, it looks like, impinging upon the neighbor's backyard.
Exactly.
So I'm in favor of the application just because it seems to be not only quiet, but if anything, it's equal to or better than having it in the backyard.
And I would think 50 decibels, even that close, versus 70 decibels, seven feet or eight feet or 10 feet away, is not as significant as the 10-foot 70 decibels because it's a geometric thing. And I think other examples of 50 decibels is like people talking, having normal conversations with each other. It is, I can imagine that this would be disturbing in any way. But any other questions or comments?
I was just going to comment that typically in the summer, when you've got your unit on, the person next door has their windows closed and their unit on. So it really becomes less of a distraction. it really becomes less of a distraction. I do have one question. I thought the letter that we received that was emailed to us from the neighbor to the west said that if it was a problem, they had requested some sort of sound deadening of some type. I'm not sure if you've thought about that at all.
I have. I had for the conversation with him in a follow-up email, which I did send to Lisa. So I don't know what was sent to you, but that correspondence was available. So at least it has been submitted. I said that he suggested if it is a problem, that maybe we should put up a sound barrier, a three-wall fence, and as was even further clarified, at least that would require another permit. But my concern with that was airflow. You have to maintain airflow requirements, and so I offer, I said, well, why wouldn't a good solution be to put up high-quality exterior sound blankets, which exist and are on the fence, basically just put them up on the fence, if that's a problem, if the noise is a problem? And he said that's fine, and that was agreed to and forwarded. So we have thought and talked about that as a, if the sound is a problem beyond what we expect, you know, 50 dB does not seem like it's a problem, but I can't produce that sound here.
In the past, we've dealt with sometimes people that want to have a generator outside on the side of their house. And I think from some of the studies, the noise actually could get worse if you tried to enclose it too much. The sound could bounce more. So I like the solution, you know, to put a blanket on the fence if necessary. But given that the low decimal level now, I wouldn't think it would be a problem.
Any other comments or questions? If not, Lisa, is there anyone else that wants to speak on this?
There is no one else in the meeting, and we have no comments on the chat or in email.
Seeing no one, I think we can close the testimony and ask if a board member would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to recommend granting a request for 7.22 foot side yard air condenser or conditioner setback variation to permit the installation of air conditioner, condenser at 522 Green Leaf in accordance with the plan submitted.
Second?
I think, you know, during our discussion, we've covered all the points, and I think it's a good solution. I like that it is. I hadn't seen this as a solution before, but I like the split system with the low decimal level. We haven't had, I don't believe, since I've been on about eight years, I've seen one of those. I think it's a good solution, and I can support it.
I would agree with Bob. I think it is a good solution, and the noise level seems to be at a minimum, and I would be surprised if the neighbor is bothered at any time.
Any other comments? If not, are we ready to take a vote? Ms. Roberts, could you please call for a vote?
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Felco?
Yes.
Mr. Glattard?
Sorry, yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Cameron Schneider?
Yes. So this goes with a positive recommendation to the village board, which will meet on April 13th. You will receive notice from Ms. Roberts confirming the village vote, but you may want to be there at the meeting. Mr. Stern, thank you very, for a very thorough presentation on this request. Thank you. I think we have one more item on the agenda.
Just one more thing. I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2021-C-06.
Second bet.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Felco?
Yes.
Mr. Glattard?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Cameron Schneider?
Yes.
I move to approve the minutes of February 17th, 2021.
Second?
Second.
I'm laughing at the prospect, the possibility that the motion might fail due to a lack of a second for approving minutes.
Mr. Felco?
Yes.
Mr. Glattard?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Yes.
Cameron Schneider?
Yes. I don't know if, there's no other business. I don't know if there's anyone out there that wishes to raise anything. Ms. Roberts, I assume there's nobody there?
Nobody here.
So we can adjourn, can I ask for a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Felco?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Cameron Schneider?
Yes. Thank you very much. This concludes our meeting. And do we have something for the next meeting?